You know what makes Minot magic to me?
Good friends.
Great people.
It's our downtown.
You can't beat it.
Welcome.
Rediscover.
Rediscover the magic in Minot.
2020 has been a year. So I tell you what, let's focus on something positive. How about a citizen of the year? This year for the state of the city, we are going to be looking for one individual who has done magic things in Minot. There's a catch, though. I want you to submit the application, or rather, the providence that explains why this individual deserves the citizen of the year award for the city of Minot. So I want you to grab a phone or anything else that you can record on and make your submission. Even if you don't know how to run a camera phone or recording device, we can certainly help you out right here in the Minot Public Library with some great people that can even teach you a new skill. But you know what? We're going to make this even a little better. The winner of the citizen of the year is going to have a $1,000 donation made in their name to their favorite charity right here in Minot. That is all compliments of First International Bank and Trust here of Minot. And even for doing such a great job of making that submission, the person that is submitting the video is going to be given $100 in chamber bucks courtesy of North Dakota Farmers Union Insurance. So how do you get those submissions? Well, we'll show you how.
What makes Minot magic for me is the way our community comes together. There is no other community that is able to come back from a setback like Minot.
The arts are so important because they help you connect to your inner self.
It's not enough to work and sleep and eat. It's the arts that prove that we're alive.
We both grew up in the Minot Arts Community doing shows, and we definitely would be here where we are today doing what we do without all the learning experiences we had in Minot.
Yes, we're so thankful for the arts community for allowing us to be able to produce and create art every day like we are this summer in the Midora musical. Thank you so much.
We all have stories and ideas to share, and an active art community helps us do that, whether we're the ones sharing or the ones listening.
The theater events, the visual art events, there's lots of opportunities here in the Magic City.
What makes the arts truly important to me is the vibrancy and learning, kind of inspiration and atmosphere that they provide to Minot.
Well, as you can tell, sometimes it's rather a dead issue.
The arts mean everything to me. They actually keep me sane and have kept me sane through this whole coronavirus mess.
And music and theater and opportunities for expression, it beautifies our life. It makes our life worth living. Arts bring all the things that are good together. And Minot is a rich place for what we have.
Especially in these times during quarantine, it's been tough to get people together. So having all of these different events, even if they're online or if they have to do it some different way, it's really nice to have that way to bring people together.
Such a fun and tight community where everybody helps out each other. Such a loving community to be a part of.
I think the arts are what make Minot the welcoming community that it is. And we go to various concerts. We take in art events at different museums. And we are always ready to support arts in the parks.
Get involved. It's so much fun.
We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order for this afternoon. It is 5:30 here, Monday, January 4, 2021. I do want to remind everyone in the audience and at the dais to go ahead in silence or put their electronic devices on vibrate so we can keep the distractions down to a minimum. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Pitner?
Here.
Padigula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of items before we get into the reports here. Number three is our COVID update. We do have our executive officer from First District Health Unit here, Ms. Lisa Klute. Lisa, we got you at the front of the meeting this afternoon as well. That way, just in case a few things do come up, that we're able to get you back to your busy schedule. If you want to go ahead and come forward to the microphone, we'll get an update on where we're at with the vaccinations and all of the different activities that have transpired since our last meeting. So is the little green light on your microphone on?
It is now.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. And I am pleased to give an update this afternoon. We have come a long way here. And I just have to applaud everybody in the community for all of their efforts that we have lowered these positivity rates. We are seeing less impact to the hospitals, to funeral homes. It has been very good to see. And I think all of us are breathing a sigh of relief. I also want to indicate that, you know, the governor announced shortly before I got here that he has pulled down some of those executive orders. And mostly it has to do, in my quick review of it, was with capacity in bars and restaurants. So it's important to continue these mitigation efforts. We are still seeing, you know, as the mayor has indicated, some higher positivity rates at the testing at the fire department. But certainly, we are going in the right direction. And so it's important that we continue to be vigilant at the same time as we are getting the vaccine out to people. And I will give you an update on that. I could go through all of the numbers, and I would be happy to do that. But I think that you all have access to that information, and I won't spend a lot of time on that this evening. But as I indicated, the numbers are moving in the right direction. We have moved out of a critical risk situation into a moderate category. So again, kudos to everybody in the community, businesses, everybody that has worked so hard to make that happen. So with that, I just want to talk a little bit about testing. We are continuing to test. We applaud the efforts that the city has undertaken with the binex testing over at the fire department that the mayor called me right before Christmas, can't remember what day it was, and indicated that he had been contacted by the governor. And we certainly didn't have the capacity to take that on right now. And we'll continue to focus our efforts on the PCR testing. The state has a lot of binex tests available. There are always some concerns with the negative readings on the binex tests. But certainly, it has the opportunity to identify positives early on and isolate them. So with the testing at First District, we have seen decreased demand with testing. And I think there's a variety of reasons why that is, but that's good. And so we were testing on average about 130, 150 a day during our peak times. And Trinity was testing, you know, 150, 200 PCR tests. We are going to move now to an 8:30 to noon testing time period over at First District. We will start that on Wednesday. And that will still allow all of the opportunities for those that are wanting PCR. But it is also freeing up some of our resources to focus more on the vaccine, which is important. Next week, we continue to do the large group testing. So we'll be at MSU on the 11th and MSU on the 12th. Dakota College up in Botno on the 13th, White Shield on the 14th, and then no large events planned on the 15th. So we will continue to focus our testing efforts on the PCR. We are in the process of moving back to the Abbott tests. That should allow us to get test results back faster than what we were experiencing with the Mako tests. So hopefully, by next week, we will be transferred back over to the Abbott tests. So the most important thing that we are focusing on right now is the vaccine. We have worked with all of the emergency managers in the seven counties. They have been contacting, been contacting first responders in regards to getting vaccinated and setting up appointments at First District to do that. We have gotten into a good deal of the Minot Fire and police, and we are continuing to work on that. So our doses that we have been able to access have been limited at this point. 200 here, 100 there. And as those doses have come available, we have put those all into the first responder area. We are still needing additional doses for responders in our seven counties. However, as of this morning, the State Health Department, we had several calls and emails and so forth throughout the weekend. They did say that some additional doses are being made available. First District Health Unit has put in a request for an additional 1,000 doses. We anticipate that we will receive most of what we have asked for. Next week, we will be working with emergency managers to schedule the rest of the first responders. Then what is available, we will move into that next tier. So I think I had mentioned to you prior that the tiers, the priority tiers, were to be identified by the governor. We were waiting for that information. That came out to the media, and we saw it at the same time you did on the January 31st. So when that became available, that allowed us to do some better planning. So we know that most of the healthcare workers in our seven counties that want vaccine have been vaccinated, most of the frontline healthcare workers. Long-term care, they have not completed all those vaccines. Those have been contracted with pharmaceutical company, and they will be done by about the third week of January. First District is going to continue to work on that community group. So they have various tiers or responsibilities within their tiers. They have a referral hospital system. They have the critical access hospital. And then the community, which is the non-health system associated. That's what First District is working on. So we are doing the first responders, the COVID vaccinators, and then we move into Tier 1B, which isn't significant for us, and then into Tier 2 and 3. Those are smaller tiers for the community, so we should be able to move through those fairly quickly. But again, it all depends on the doses that we can get in. So we continue to meet with our healthcare providers. We are meeting with them again tomorrow. We will meet with emergency managers this week and continue to coordinate. So I met with Trinity this afternoon to see where they are. They have good plans ready to contact their patients when they are eligible to receive vaccine. So at this point, the communication really is, as soon as we get vaccine available, we will communicate to the public in various methods of news releases, this is how this group becomes vaccinated. Watch for those news releases. There is no statewide effort. Nothing is moving statewide at the same time. So it's important to listen to your local healthcare providers and First District. There is no list. I can't tell you how many people have called to be put on to the list. There is no list. We served 90,000 people at First District. We can't develop lists of who wants it. We'll just communicate when it is available. So I can assure you that we are doing everything we can to get the vaccine in and out to these priority groups as soon as possible. The vaccine will not be sitting in our fridges. As soon as it arrives, we will have plans to get it out. So stay tuned for more information. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Klute. Certainly appreciate the information. Any questions? Elderwoman Evans.
So Ms. Klute, is the recommended advice for people who are in the 1B tier, that will be the one coming up, is not, of course, to call you. So should they wait to hear from their primary care physicians? Or should they be proactively reaching out to their healthcare providers?
They should, they will hear from their healthcare providers. So as I said, this is so fluid. We're meeting with healthcare providers tomorrow to make sure we've got everybody covered. And then I think that you will see joint news releases coming soon. So we anticipate that, you know, it's like back in the day when we were having high level of cases. We will likely be doing news releases probably every other day. So watch webpages, watch Facebook pages. We will use every means possible to communicate to the public. We know that a lot of people don't follow social media and have computers and so forth. So we will be accessing all avenues to get the information out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'll reemphasize local media releases regarding the local distribution or availability. As you pointed out, it is different throughout the state, and we're relying on the local folks to make sure that that is disseminated. So local media releases. Any other questions for Ms. Klute? Lisa, as always, we appreciate the information. Of course, the hard and diligent work of not only your folks but all of the medical frontline workers. So please pass along our appreciation and certainly to those that you speak to as well within the healthcare industry. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And that support means a lot. It's been heartwarming. And I am just in awe of the work that is being done through various sectors on this. And boy, boy, this community's come together well. And I'm proud of the partnerships that have been working together to do this. So thank you very much.
Our next item is actually mayor's report. And this is going to fall on the front side of our mayor's report for today. We do have a couple of trophies, actually. Three of them sitting up at the front of the, or right in front of the dais with us this evening. I know Mr. John McMartin from Minot Chamber, MACC, is here, as well as our Task Force 21 chairman, Mr. Mark Janser, with a little more information on the hardware that is in-house tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's extremely important to recognize that Minot Air Force Base this year was the recipient of the best bomb wing Omaha trophy as well as the best missile wing Omaha trophy. We've had instances in the past where one wing in competing with all of the wings throughout Strategic Command has won. But it's quite rare when both wings have won in the same year. And it says volumes about the quality of the airmen and the execution of the mission out at Minot Air Force Base. So we're extremely proud of Minot Air Force Base and the important role that this dual-nuclear base plays in strategic deterrence for our nation. The third trophy recognizes community support. And I think it's important that everybody recognize that the airmen would have difficulty doing their job if they didn't live in a community that was supportive, welcoming, and a great place for their families to live. And so the Barksdale Trophy is awarded every two years for the best community support to an Air Force Global Strike Command Base. And so Minot won this in 2019. And so we are currently holding that trophy, and we're extremely proud to support our Air Force Base. So, Mr. Mayor, thanks for giving us a moment to talk about this and to recognize it.
Thank you, Mr. Janser and Mr. McMartin as well, and the rest of the Task Force Team Minot that continually meets with different leadership within Minot Air Force Base. And certainly, this is also an opportunity for anyone in the community within any industry or any individuals that want to participate in, I think, that connectivity. They can always reach out to the Chamber, Mr. McMartin, and find out how they can find some collection and collaboration with the great men and women who serve out at Minot Air Force Base between the different luncheons and breakfasts and different social gatherings outside of COVID. It has been, for me, eye-opening, the connection that everyone has between Minot Air Force Base and downtown, as all of them refer to it. It is exceptional to see. And that was also very highly noted within the different leadership and colonels and Secretary of Air Force and Secretary of Defense as well, I believe, within how much effort this community puts forth to ensure that Minot Air Force Base is home here at Minot. So thank you. That also is part of my mayor's report here as well. I do have just a couple of pictures from that different presentation. My November meetings and activities, I did have quite a few, not nearly as many as the previous month, thankfully. Did have a couple of days break in here. But as you can see, a couple of different COVID coalition meetings. Of course, that is with First District, Minot Public School, our different health partners within the community. Minot Area Development Corporation Board Meeting. And then you can see there was a virtual nuclear triad conference that we were able to sit in and listen to. But there on the 15th, the Omaha Trophy Awards Ceremony that Task Force 21 members were invited out to was the first time that we were actually back out on base since, I want to say, March, if memory serves correct. So it was nice to be back out and visit with the different, not only the wing commanders but the rest of the men and women out at Minot Air Force Base as well as some of the distinguished visitors that were there for the ceremony. Also, that week, did attend the Team Minot Breakfast at the Jimmy Doolittle Center. And then again, on the 16th, another coalition meeting. The 17th, we've had a number of these governor's conference calls with the mayors across North Dakota talking about the different opportunities and challenges and collective, I think, idea brainstorming on some of the different activities that we've been doing through COVID. I did also attend the Minot Air Force Base Fifth Medical Group Ceremony out at Minot Air Force Base in recognition of all the fine, hard work that the Fifth Medical Group has done through COVID in supporting both the missions of the Fifth Bomb Wing and 91st Missile Wing out at Minot Air Force Base, as well as security forces have done outstanding work in ensuring that those missions were continuous and without interruption. I did stop over for Minot Water Superintendent Mark Vollmer's retirement after 24 years here with the city. So I want to congratulate Mr. Vollmer one more time. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, we did have Ward County Ward beating this month. And then we did also have a Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project Legislative Planning Conference Call, conference call with the Department of Emergency Services. This was what Ms. Lisa Klute referenced the day before Christmas Eve. We did get a phone call. I did get a phone call talking about wanting to take a look at the binex testing and on how we might be able to stand that up within the community. So I referenced that specifically on the 23rd. I'll go back here. We did have then, on the 26th, right following Christmas, planning conference call. And that was with the Minot Fire Department, not only our fire chief, but our assistant fire chief, Mr. Lakefield, and a few other folks within the city as we were trying to figure out how to best do this efficiently within the community. So I will give the credit to our fire department officials who had come up with the idea as we were trying to research locations with 4,000 square feet of open space to be able to get people in and out safely, given all the COVID restrictions. And we were able to use fire station, our central fire station, Fire Station 1, with the drive-through capabilities. Then on the, well, the 17th, we did have another conference call. On the 18th, then, let's see here. I'm behind one here. Sorry. The 29th was the virtual meeting with the North Dakota Mayor's 30th City Manager Meet and Greet here in Council Chambers. And I also conducted a little bit of a legislative update planning meeting afterwards. Another COVID coalition meeting. And then was the 31st and on the 2nd of January, COVID Quick Test Conference Call Updates and another media interview earlier today. But I wanted to take a special note, a special couple of marks. We've done over 11, and I say we. The fire department has done over 1,100 tests since the 28th, when they stood up the operations for the drive-through. We're running at about a 9% positivity rate within that testing. I want especially to say thank you to the North Dakota National Guard, who came in and did the training on the start, day one startup on the 28th. And then specific to the Minot Fire Department, the firefighters and Assistant Fire Chief Lonnie Sather, who's been point person on this, has done an outstanding job of keeping this fluid, keeping it quick and efficient. And Chief, I want to make sure that you pass along our thanks. We've had a tremendous support from the community since this was announced. So we're greatly appreciative. And of course, the different city employees. It's not just the firefighters that are volunteering to work the overtime or the administration staff that is working during the day. But we've had city employees for the weekends that have volunteered to come in and work some. some overtime hours, as well as actually Ward County Emergency Manager and others who have volunteered to come in and train in and work through that. So, outstanding job through this. We have adjusted hours, make sure that you go to the city's website as we continue to move forward. I expect those hours to continue to evolve as need and positivity rates will dictate coming down the line. As you can see, I forgot to update my October meeting activities to December and January on my final page. Outside of that, I did have 18 other meetings regarding city business, and of course, many other phone calls, emails, social media and staff, interactions through the month of December and January. Certainly stand for any questions, whether it's the drive-through testing or interactions on the state level, or any of the other meetings or business throughout the month. Before I introduce our newest City Manager here, I want to take a moment, I'm going to come down front, something I forgot to mention before the meeting, so hold on one moment. So, for the better part of 2020, we were in transition here within City Hall, and leadership change within the City Manager, of course, Alderman Potagul had mentioned this at our last meeting, but I want to take a special moment and recognize Mr. Lakefield for a lot of hard work through a very difficult time of not only transition within the City Manager position, but then through COVID. I can't tell you how many times I called him on weekends or evenings, or interrupting every lunch, I think, for about three weeks there, and always was on top of things. So, Mr. Lakefield, I do have, if nothing else, a small token of my appreciation, I think, the rest of the city, if you would. Certainly grateful that you were able to step in in probably one of the most interesting situations that we've had in a lot of recent memory. So, like I said, it's a small token of appreciation, but I greatly appreciate the work that you have done over the last six, eight months through all of this, so you did an outstanding job, and we were lucky to have you, even through all of the transition with our software. So, Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, our new City Manager is at the dais with us this evening, and I certainly want to take a moment to, one, introduce Mr. Harold Stewart and say welcome to our City Council Meetings. I think we might be able to keep this one shorter than most, we'll see, no promises, but we're happy to have you here, sir, and I will hand over the remote control for your report this evening, sir.
Thank you. It is indeed a pleasure to be here, finally. It's always difficult, both personally and professionally, making these transitions, but I'm definitely very excited to transition here to Minot and hopefully start a long period of service here, working with council, staff, and community leaders and partners to make Minot the best we can. I do have a brief presentation here due to a short week last week, and being the first time on the job, and a lot of the staff being out of the office, using some personal time and those types of things, this probably is not the format that I will normally present, but in the future, there will be a report available as part of the council packet for purposes of transparency and preparation for the meeting and those types of things. But here today, just want to go over briefly, just a brief introduction. Again, thank you for having me. Just some key roles there that I play, I take very seriously my role as a public servant. There's a reason why I chose city management as a profession, I want to make communities better and stronger, and I'm excited to bring that passion here to Minot, but also in addition to that, I take my responsibilities as a husband and father, is my most important roles and responsibilities within my life. And I've been a leader since I was a kid, ever since probably joining in the Boy Scouts and working my way up, and again, happy to bring those skill sets here. I have probably close to 15 years in public service, and 12 of those have been as a City Manager prior to Minot, in being City Manager in three different states, Oklahoma, Nebraska, Knoxville, Iowa, and Lawrenceburg, Missouri, which is the home to White Men Air Force Base and the University of Central Missouri. So, some dynamics there that I think translate very well here to the community of Minot. I was also on a meeting today with the League of Municipalities and talking about my perspective of dealing with local government issues in several states, and hopefully that will be a resource to the state of North Dakota as well going forward. I have a Master's in Public Administration from the University of Kansas. Those that may not be familiar with the world of public administration, University of Kansas is routinely ranked by US News and World Reports as the number one program in the country for city managers, and has looked to very prestigiously within the profession, they're pretty much considered the Harvard of city management. So, excited to bring that here. I'm also an ICMA accredited City Manager, which means I've gone through the process with my colleagues and my profession to make sure that I'm administering and doing my responsibilities within best practices of city management. So, again, excited to bring that here. First week so far, was getting settled in, doing a lot of learning about Minot, and, you know, coming here and a lot of one-on-ones with each of the council members and department heads and key community leaders. I want to take the time to make sure that I connect well with the organization and the community going forward. I have a lot of people asking me, what is it that I want to change, you know, what am I going to change, what am I going to focus on? And while I've done a lot of research on Minot in preparation of coming here, until you can really get your feet on the ground here and meet people, I don't like to make those decisions in advance, and so I do plan on taking the next several weeks and months to learn appropriately how and why Minot does what it does, and help identify and maybe collaborate on some of the key issues and priorities that are facing the community moving forward, and how I can be of assistance in helping make those things happen. But a lot of that's going to be in talking with key stakeholders and staff and those types of things, and understanding the culture and the character of Minot and the organization of the city of Minot going forward. And then, of course, the routine things, getting settled in with paperwork and software and systems, and most importantly, as the Mayor alluded to earlier, a brief meeting in the middle of last week with regards to Legislative Session. Obviously, that starts later this week with COVID changing the dynamics. We're kind of adapting with that, which will include, anytime that we're speaking to any of the legislatures or providing testimony, a lot of that has to be uploaded in advance, and so working with staff right now on how we're going to present that message, both on behalf of Minot but the entire region, with regarding to flooding issues and those types of things, and how we're going to be a partner regionally to help make those things happen, and how the legislature can help with that. And so, we're working on that. So, it was a very busy first week. Weeks coming ahead, again, just kind of a summary here of a lot of the things I just spoke about, but meeting with a lot of people, preparing for the upcoming Legislative Session, getting familiar with major city projects. I've already been on a tour with the Public Works Department, getting eyes on a lot of the key projects that are going forward, especially with the Legislative Session coming up. My initial meetings with department heads will be a one-on-one, get to know, set expectations for communication, those types of things, but then I want that to be followed up with a tour of each department specifically, get to know a lot of the staff that are within those departments and the projects, and hearing their perspective of the projects they're working on, but also how they feel supported as an organization, so I can assess those things as well and how we can do that better, to make sure that our employees have the right tools and training necessary to do their jobs effectively on behalf of the citizens of Minot. And then, obviously, meeting with legislators one-on-one, we did have a couple of them come to the meet and greet last week, and I appreciated meeting them, but I want to reach out to the other ones as well. The big thing for me is building relationships, both internally and externally, for the city of Minot, and making sure that we are seen as a regional partner and as a community partner. And I think I said this at the meet and greet as well, that my goal and aspiration is to make sure that Minot is seen as a leader and one who does things in accordance with best practices. So, as people throughout the state and country are dealing with issues, that Minot becomes one of those names synonymous with how to do things the correct way, and that's my goal and objective for the city of Minot going forward. And in the meantime, I'm reading all the city policies, personnel policies, codes, state regulations, et cetera, and making sure that I know the lay of the land and what the proper process is for doing things, and again, the how and the why those policies are in place and how they were created, and then that way, in the future, I can provide some input into, if any changes are needed, how that can be done more effectively and why that's important. But I imagine in many ways, a lot of those city policies or codes and things are working just fine and may or may not need any tweaking at all. So, that's my focus here over the coming weeks. Again, I'm very excited to be here, my family's very excited to join this community and be very vested here. Believe it or not, even my high school and middle school sons are very excited about coming to Minot. That was a big win for us. It's a difficult age to move, but they are very excited to be here and be a part of the community. We brought them, all the kids with us, as part of the interview process, and they all fell in love with Minot, and we're very excited to be a part of this community for the foreseeable future. And I continue to be impressed with the quality of leadership. I had the opportunity to interview in 2014, I was impressed with the leadership then, but even comparing over that short stint from 2014 to 2020, or 2020, the progress that this community has made is very impressive, and I'm very excited to be a part of that and hoping to continue that, and I guess my final piece would be is transparency is very important to me, so I'm very open to council or staff or any citizens that have any questions on how to engage with their government, or how or why to participate in a process and how and why decisions are being made. That's a priority to me, and please don't hesitate to reach out to me and contact me, and I will take the time necessary to make sure that connection and that interaction happens in a positive way. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the council has, I know the council knows a lot of this, and this is by way of introduction for the public, just as much as it was for the council, but again, very excited to be here, and I'm very optimistic that there'll be some very positive happenings within this community over the next several years.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions of the City Manager? Certainly, we'll look forward to the upcoming reports as well as interactions in weeks, months, and likely years ahead, so welcome. Our next item on the agenda is our City Attorney's Report, Ms. Hendershot.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I submitted a written report, and I do have one brief update. You may have noticed, under the Cypress litigation section, there were a couple of motions pending. One was a motion to continue the trial date, which was scheduled for January 25th, and the other was a motion to compel. Today, this afternoon, a hearing took place in front of the court, and the court did grant this motion to continue the trial because it was a COVID-related request, and the court has been presumptively approving those types of requests, and the judge ordered the calendar clerk to reschedule it at least three months out, so we don't have a finalized date yet, but I'll get that to you as soon as we have it. With regard to the other motion, the motion to compel, the court took that under advisement, so we'll have a decision on that in the near future, I assume. With everything else, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hendershot. Any other questions or any questions regarding not only the update but those that are attached to the agenda? Alderwoman Evans.
It's not on the report, but what is the timeline you're looking at for the, you know, what we approved in December for the additional staff attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, that was advertised, and the advertisement closed on January 1st. We have six applicants, and so we're looking to schedule the interview process.
Terrific.
Yep.
Great, good news.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Moves us into our next section of the agenda for this afternoon. We're looking at consent items, we have 7.1 through 7.8. Are there any individual items within consent that need to be pulled for individual consideration? Just look through the audience here. Again, these are all items within the consent agenda that would be approved if the motion is made with recommendations from staff. Seeing none, Alderman Pitner.
Mayor, I move consent on the remaining items.
Second. Motion to pass on consent from Alderman Pitner, second by Alderman Janser. Any discussion on the motion? Second call on discussion. Final call. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner?
Yes.
Hodja Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Zitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved, that takes us to next section of our agenda. These are the action items. 8.1 is public hearing, the Renaissance Zone Case, M-96, conditional approval of Dakota Apple Partnership. At its meeting of December 17th, 2020, the Renaissance Zone Review Board reviewed an application for the project M-96 filed by Chad Thompson of Dakota Apple Partners for a new construction project on a multi-tenant retail store. Dakota Apple Partnership is requesting a five-year property tax exemption, including improvements on the property located at 304 Fourth Avenue Northwest. Recommendation is Renaissance Zone Review Board recommends conditional approval of the Renaissance Zone Application M-96 for a five-year property tax exemption, including improvements on the property located at 304 Fourth Avenue Northwest. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak either in favor or opposed to the recommendation. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to come and speak in favor or in opposition to the recommendation from the Renaissance Zone Review Board. Seeing none, I would look to the council for a motion. Alderman Pitner.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Motion, close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Evans. Any discussion? Alderman Pitner.
I obviously sit on the Renaissance Review as liaison for the council, and I'm excited to see projects like this coming forward, and I'm excited to see that this program is working to help incentivize development of relatively underutilized parcels within the city, and I think this project and program is working as intended, and I'm excited to see more of these in the future.
Any other discussion? Second call. Final call for discussion. We have motion to approve, please call the roll.
Pitner?
Yep.
Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Zitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved, that takes us to 8.2, no parking on 10th Street Northeast at 9th Avenue Northeast. The Engineering Department was contacted by the Minot Public School Transportation Service about the school buses having difficulty navigating on eastbound 9th Avenue Northeast, right turn movement to head southbound on 10th Street Northeast. Both 10th Street Northeast and 9th Avenue Northeast in this vicinity are 24-foot wide roadways that currently have no one side of the road designated as no parking. It is the Engineering Department's, as well as the Minot Public School Transportation Service, feeling that if a short no-parking zone was created on the east side of 10th Street Northeast, immediately south of 9th Avenue Northeast, that the school buses along the city's maintenance and emergency services vehicles would be better able to navigate that intersection. Recommendation is that the council pass a resolution to add a parking restriction to the following location, east side of 10th Street Northeast, south 50 feet from the center of the 9th Avenue Northeast intersection. What are the wishes of the council? Alderman Janser.
I'll move the recommendation.
Motion to approve the recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross, motion was made by Alderman Janser. Any discussion on the motion?
I was just wondering if...
Oh, sorry, Alderman Janser.
I just had a question related to, is this, so is this a permanent 24-hour parking restriction, or is it in any way timed for school?
Thank you, Alderman Janser. Would look to staff for a little clarification.
Mayor, Madam Alderman Janser, the intent was to do a traditional no-parking, so it would be 24 hours a day.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Alderwoman Evans.
Did you hear anything from residents on the streets, either supporting or objecting to this designation?
We did not reach out to residents for this particular resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Any further discussion? Final call. Motion is to approve, please call... call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number nine is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. Just ask that you state your name and affiliation and city of residency.
Mr. Moss, would you be able to hit the button for me? Thank you.
About now.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Aaron Moss with the North Dakota Fraternal Order of Police, Service Valley Regional Lodge Number 7. And I just wanted to speak briefly tonight to bring to the attention of the council a rather sad but necessary reminder of a anniversary that is about to occur later this month. Nearly 100 years ago, on January 21st, 1921, the Minot Police Department suffered its most recent line-of-duty death, when Patrolman Lee Failer was shot and killed while investigating a suspicious vehicle. It turned out to be operated by a car thief and a whiskey runner that come across the border from Canada, where he had stolen the vehicle, and was moving his illicit goods, eventually with the intention of getting it to Minnesota. Because of Officer Failer's attention to detail and ability to follow up his initial suspicions, he was proven right, but unfortunately, in the process, was killed in a shootout with the suspect. And as a member of that department, as well as the president of the union that represents many of the members of that department, I felt incumbent upon me to ensure that Lee's memory was brought to the forefront at this time of year. The original intention was to hold a memorial service for the public to come, as we did with the Minot Police Department's first line-of-duty death, with Patrick Devaney being that officer, as well as State Agent Kersey Goan. However, with the restrictions, that memorial will have to be postponed, and we hope sometime, potentially sometime this summer, we'll be able to be able to do that. So with that, I'll close my remarks, and thank you for your attention, and stand for any questions if there are any.
Appreciate it, Mr. Moss. Any questions at this time? Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate you bringing that back to our attention, and certainly we'll look for that perhaps in the spring or summer, as restrictions, we hope, become less necessary.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Once again, this is an opportunity for personal appearances, any item, for discussion on any item that is or is not on our agenda. Seeing none, moving on. This is under the miscellaneous and discussion items, number 10. We don't have any item that I have on mine. Is there any other item that is needed for discussion at this time from council? Seeing no others, I just have one reminder coming up for 2021, is we are coming up on the 10th anniversary. It will be before too long, that June 26th, actually June 22nd, is the day that the sirens rang out in Minot for the 10th anniversary of the 2011 flood. Right now, anticipations that we are aiming for is June 26th of 2021, which would be the day of the crest. It's a Saturday, that we anticipate organizing a 10-year anniversary of not only the devastation, but also the recovery efforts, and appreciation for everything that has transpired up to, during, and certainly after the flood, as it has been a central part of our community now for a decade. And certainly want to take time to not only memorialize the event, but also show all of the hard work and dedication, and appreciation from everyone who served at that time, but certainly has pitched in and lent a hand in all different capacities since that time. So, as it is January, time slips away. It still feels like yesterday was March 2020 somehow in my mind, but I want just the community to be aware, the council to be aware, and certainly we'll start that planning process in the days and weeks ahead. So, any other items that need to be discussed at this time? Seeing none, number 11 is adjournment tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Pitner to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.